And we'll stand to the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, so move to, we got additions or adjustments to the agenda?
Um, yes.
What you got?
Just discussing hiring somebody for the snow problem.
Okay, so we can put winter sidewalks under other business?
Sure.
And I'd also put furnace quotes under other business? Or just furnace, just by repairs? Move on to approve the...
Are we getting someone else by Zoom?
I've been trying to get them in here right now.
Thanks, I'd like you from the group?
Yeah.
See if I can connect.
Internet?
I've got internet. I've got to go through my... You know, I'm not... Set it up. Should be clicking on here telling me. And I bet we have a... Like X on there. You know what? I'm gonna start it on my phone. She's just gonna talk to us, I think. Just give us a little update, because nobody's been working. Um, she's not, you know, we've already agreed that we'll take it. And they won't, she, I think she just wants to update us on where they're at, because no one's working.
Put down it, or unfinished. What is her name?
Lydia Parker.
Lydia, thank you.
We're gonna put Lydia Parker underneath the unfinished business.
I've got a question about the snow removal of the sidewalks.
We're not there yet. Waiting for you?
No, no.
Okay, all right, so we're gonna move on to...
She's not gonna do it?
I would, she may connect.
Approve, approve the minutes. Log is four.
And make the motion to approve the minutes.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Public comments, communications.
Now's your time, Vera.
Okay. Are you guys gonna be responsible for busting windows and screens out of people's buildings and homes? For the snow removal from the sidewalks being poured up on people's windows?
Is that a question or a comment?
That's a question.
So we're not gonna answer questions, we'll take anything you have under advisement?
Okay. Last year, I asked for the snow removal from the sidewalk not to be shoved up on my windows. I have video with a snow removal that's pointed at my windows as it went by the corner of my windows. I've got a hole in my screen about that big. Thank God, from where a rock went through it. Thank God, my window wasn't broken. That's what I wanna know. Are you gonna be responsible for my windows being broken? Every year, I go through this. Every year. Either the snow was shoved up on my building to my windows? Or the snow removal from the sidewalk being blown into my windows?
The answer I'll give you is, we are responsible for removing the snow from the sidewalks.
But you're not, you're not gonna be responsible for the broken windows that you caused from the snow being shoved into the windows?
I believe by law, we're not responsible.
But you have every right to blow snow from people's windows and bust them?
So, we're this, we're not gonna go in a back and forth? What I'm telling you is, we are responsible. Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, any question?
Go ahead.
They're in front of my driveway. It's usually getting worse every year since they put the sidewalk in. The first, when they put it in, it was fine. These, every year, it seems the ground's gonna be sinking. Now, it's when my car, my sister's car, early mouse drives out. It drops down and I hear a grinding metal, it drives against it. I don't know why it hasn't been raised up so leveled off, so it's more... My driveway across, either road, more of a level platform.
So, I believe we talked about this last meeting?
Yes.
Some? And, so are you talking like from the roadway to the sidewalk? Is where you're bottoming out?
Yeah, it's right in front, we, we put the, front area.
Yeah, sun.
Where, kind of where it's sinking down, right where the telephone pole is, that section there, section right in front, right in front of the sidewalk. Which is, down the side of my, which is my driveway, on the other side.
So, I, I drove by and looked at it? And it appears to me like the culvert is kinda just lifting and everything's kinda sinking around it. I, my suggestion would just be fill it in, that little area with...
So, if it's the, if it's the roadway to the sidewalk, I think what we can do for the short term is probably put some cold patch down.
Yeah, so it's, right now, it's getting kinda...
Just, just to try to level it out?
If I go across there, you go there, here, there, here, like spray and grinding metal in there. And I don't, and I can't afford to replace, like repair it down. You know, even if I got a friend who wanted to drive my driveway, it works, he's afraid our car's gonna get stuck.
Okay, we'll, we'll look into it further, see if we can get it fixed before it gets too late.
Right now, it's, and the wind has a lot of this, how many words for it, for springtime?
Right, okay, we'll, we'll try to address it.
All right, thank you.
I wasn't finished. In 2014, when my insurance company went out there...
Hold up, Vera, okay? Before anybody talks, they're gonna be recognized by the board.
Okay, I wasn't finished, though.
So, what I'm saying is, and this is gonna go to everybody. This is not a Q and A session. This is public comments and concerns.
I have comments.
So, you can voice your comments and your concerns to the board. If we have any follow-up questions, we will ask you follow-up questions.
All right.
If we don't, we will take it under advisement.
I wasn't finished.
So, you were finished, because you were asking questions about if we were gonna replace windows?
Then I have another comment.
What is your comment?
The comment was, I had the insurance company out there in 2015, my insurance company and the state, your insurance company. While we were standing there, I explained to my insurance company that the snow was being shoved up on my bed, building as high as my brand-new windows. Both insurance companies acknowledged that. Your insurance company said it would not be done again, because my insurance company said that you guys would pay for the damages to my building if it happens again.
Okay.
Comment?
Any other? Yes, sir?
So, I just wanna know what's going on with the, you know, the two buildings next to me? Like, if there's been any development there? Um, I've actually got three comments, so one of them has to do with those buildings. I noticed the other day, when we were weed whacking around and doing some maintenance on the side of the building, that there's like sheets hung up around the windows and stuff, as if somebody had been living in there, or is living in there. So, you know, of course, it brings up, and it's trash. Basically, that's been dumped on my property on the corner of the building. You know, the, my property line goes all along the, the foundation of that building, what's left of it. So, that's just one. I have a concern there, obviously. It keeps, it's getting worse. So, second thing that I wanted to make a comment on was, at a meeting here, actually a couple of meetings here, twice, I made, you know, asked if anybody had looked into monies available for Blight to help take care of that for the village, so that the village wasn't on the hook for, you know, whatever, tearing it down, filling the hole in, that kind of thing. Response I got a couple of months later was that the, you know, that there wasn't, that someone had, and I'm not sure who it was, but someone had contacted the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, and there was nothing available, but I'm sure everybody's aware that, you know, on the Board of Trustees, that, you know, localities here would just issue 4.1 million dollars in grants, one of which included 350 going to a grocery store that used to be owned by Kent, you know, the grocery store on our main street. 350 went there, it was a nonprofit formed and so forth. And I only bring that up, because obviously, there were monies, there's monies around. Montgomery got some, everybody got some money. Some of it had to do with water and sewer upgrades and so forth. So, I was a little, like disappointed that Troy or North Troy wasn't included in the awards there. And I wanna know if anybody knew anything about that? Or if you were, had applied for some of those funds and just didn't get them? And then, my third concern is that when I paid my water bill the last quarter, it had come to my attention that there were members in Troy and North Troy that sit on boards here that have unpaid water bills. And I wanted to know if there was an opinion there regarding the ethics of that being allowed to happen? And if that doesn't open up a, you know, can of worms for someone to be more pliable when it comes to permits being issued and things like that.
Okay. So, the first concern with the buildings is the, the buildings are a concern of all of ours. And we did, we were looking into something, Robert Langland had something through zoning, as far as...
He reached out to NVDA, who sometimes has grant money available. However, they're more, they will not help tear down unless you have a master plan to beautify it afterward. They don't just wanna, they won't just give money to tear down. They want to be able to, you know, you need a whole plan of what you're gonna build back and all this. And unfortunately, COVID hit just when they would not even come out and look at the two properties that we were discussing with that.
Who, and what organizations is, I'm sorry?
Through NVDA.
Northeast Regional Vermont Development Association.
Yes.
Okay.
Saint John'sbury.
Okay.
Yeah, and they're, in the past, they're...
Are they a public agency? I'm sorry.
Yes.
They are, okay.
Yeah, yeah, they are.
Okay.
They helped remove the gas tanks from the old gas station, so...
Yes.
Oh, okay. Then regarding your other concern, as far as the water sewer bills, is everyone's held the same standard, no matter what your status in the village or the town is, as far as the water sewer bills?
Okay, so then, so that, so that begs the question, right? That, that, that's, I understand that.
Okay.
That you can't single out somebody for that? But I think it, it, there's an ethical question that needs to be answered. And maybe it's better for the Secretary of State or the Attorney General to answer that question? So, and that's, that's my comment on it, as far as that response is concerned. I do think that should be, I think that should be looked at.
Okay.
I, I'd just like to add that as far as ethics, people that are on the board are elected to the board by the voters. So, it's up to the voters if they think they don't wanna vote for them because of this reason?
Excuse me, she wasn't...
She wasn't what?
Elected by the voters?
No, but that's because we had a vacancy. But you will be the next time.
You voted on?
Exactly. It's a premonition.
She wasn't elected by the voters?
No.
Okay, no, no.
But she has to be.
We're not gonna go in a back and forth.
So, my question again would be with the, regarding the money for the buildings, was anybody in Troy or the village aware of the, of this, the grants that were coming through Leahy's office? The 4.1 million, did anybody here know that that was going on?
I did. I weren't aware of the grant.
I didn't know about it until the news hit on.
I wasn't aware that it would pertain to that type of a thing. I thought it would be, um, I, I wasn't aware that we could have used it for that, and we obviously would have filled out paperwork.
But did somebody, did anybody from the village contact Leahy's office? It was one of my suggestions, because I knew that there were federal monies available for Blight. They had monies that were earmarked for that reason. It started with Flint, Michigan. They, they've been doing that. It might be worth checking into. And if you guys remember, I mentioned to you Rutland, the case in Rutland, where Rutland has received some monies, and they have been able to do quite a bit with their abandoned buildings and, and kinda rejuvenate their downtown area and get, and solve some of the issues around there. And it required some creative, you know, negotiation with abutting landowners and that kind of thing. It was, there's a lot of people involved, so it was like, but it's an example of what, how it can be taken care of. And they've been working on that for three years now, or so, or more, maybe, but three years that I know of it, so, you know, that's the only thing. So, maybe if somebody just contacted Leahy's office for the next, kinda round, maybe? It's, it's not a lot of money, right? And there's monies available.
I wasn't aware of that.
Thank you.
Part of the USRDA, I believe, Terry.
All right, anybody else? Ray?
Oi, oi, all ye having addressing to the kings and the queens of the village, who elevated themselves to that elevated title. King Richard, Queen Terry, and Queen Helene, you eliminated our ability at annual meetings to come in here and vote on that vote. You took the shortcut and interpreted a governor's request, 'cause you called that office and wanted to know what to do about having our annual meeting. And instead, you were giving the golden key to the entire democracy system and chose to elevate yourself to queenhood and kinghood and queenhood. 'Cause you yourself said, "I had great questions, I could ask him at annual meeting." Put me off for a year on getting on the agenda. And now, all three of you are enlisted in entitling us to be taxed on what you three felt that we, who, as she just so politely put, "If you don't like the way she acts, vote her out." It's kinda hard to do when all the fire department shows up and now, and we're setting single one of you people. And voting these people to increase their budget. Three times! You said you weren't gonna do it. I went to an office and I sure brought the camera, 'cause now I know I can't believe you to your face when you talk to me. 'Cause you said you wouldn't increase the fire department's budget without having voter approval. But yet, you did. All three of you. You approved a vote for that fire department that this man and a former board member went and got without voter approval in 2019, and added it into the 2020 budget. You've then increased the 2020 budget and intended us more to... I've got another four and a half minutes. Give us just a minute, spoke for six. No time was put. So, you're gonna listen to me test you. I get to speak, Mr. Chairman. I have an unlimited speed.
There's ten, there's ten minutes total. And right now, we are at nineteen.
No, sir, you did not set that at the beginning of the meeting.
We have our, we have...
You did not set that with me. You, you use these things at your leisure, as a king would do. The court is addressing you. It's my time.
If I'm the king, you're my peasant.
It's my time. Excuse me?
If I'm the king, you're my peasant. Sit down.
No, I will not, 'cause you're not my king. And you're not entitled to my respect. And you shouldn't say the Pledge of Allegiance and end it with liberty and justice for all. 'Cause what you did was get an illegal loan, take money from me, him, 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 and her, and her, without voter approval. And then you sat here and said it was all good, I could come to annual meeting. When's annual meeting, Rich?
Next year.
How many times has this board met? Out of your own orders of agenda? How many times in this year has this board met off of a Tuesday? Out of agenda, not warned as a special meeting, not as an emergency meeting? How many times, Mr. Chairman, oh, that's right, you don't answer questions during this time? I'll get on the agenda if we wanna ask questions. Isn't that it? No, that's not it. 'Cause you instructed this woman four different times, when I have requested to get on the agenda, to remove me. This isn't equal and fair and justice for all. This is Queen Terry, King Richard, Queen, King Dick, and Queen Helene, who has lied to me, to my face. You embedded $38,000 in the sewer fund to put away from the doom and gloom of this big review coming up, Terry. You sat there in that office at the town clerk and explained it to me. We're so afraid, all the repairs are gonna have to be done. You came in blind, you acted blind, and now you're looking stupid. Are we gonna come out under budget on the sewer this year? 'Cause if not, you add it to the deficit by storing money away, 38 more thousand dollars, indebted to us as taxpayers. From doom and gloom, from an employee you got rid of, who didn't know his own damn asshole from a hole in the ground. Didn't wanna work.
That's not good.
You should, all three of you, be ashamed of yourselves. Totally unfit for this position. And then you make the statement she's elected. When will she be elected to that position? Don't answer my question, it's my comment time. You wanna respond, you'll get the address from the chairman, and then you may respond to me. This woman has been out of order more than once, don't start with me, too. Thank you all for your undivided kingship and queenhood.
You're welcome.
You have no respect for me. I'd spit in your face if I knew it was an assault, you jerk. You all should be ashamed of yourselves for not showing up here to vote these people out during annual meeting. Ashamed of you.
Rich?
Sorry, Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure there is Blight money available, and it would be great.
It would be fantastic. I know I have...
Yeah, I, like I said, with all, it started with all the foreclosures they were having, and, and it, whole neighborhoods were wiped out, so... And it's not, I don't believe it's linked up with the NVDA, where you'll have to like commit a big plan or anything like that. Um, Helene, I believe you're wrong when it comes to damage to personal property by village equipment. We have paid out monies before. And it's happened to me last winter. I only, I only had a pane of glass broken in my lamp out front. I'll take care of it this year, but I, I really like whoever's snow blowing sidewalks next year to pay a little better attention, and maybe not bombard my lamp with the...
I have no problem with them paying a little more attention, because we don't want unnecessary damage.
Sure, and it's only a piece of glass, but it's a trapezoid, so it's...
As far as the law goes, at the town level, several years ago, we had a town taxpayer who came to the town and wanted some damage paid for to his siding. Was that a brand-new siding? Because, because when the plows did the street, they blew gravel, and it hit his siding. And it turns out that legally, in Vermont, towns are not responsible for damage done in plowing streets and windows.
And, well, I...
I don't know, I don't know if that applies to sidewalks. I don't know. I know it's by streets.
There is a remedy, though. You report the vehicle to DOJ, and then it gets a record established. And eventually, careless and negligent driving characters will be brought against the, the village operator that is in turn operating the hazard vehicle.
Well, like I said...
That was a remedy that was sought by the person she's speaking.
We had a case, I don't know, five years ago, it was a while ago. We don't get too many of them, and I did say, whoever the operator is, we do want them to operate as well as possible, so as not to cause damage. I mean, I'm not saying, yeah, they can do whatever they want, because we're not responsible for damage. I'm saying...
And trust me, I...
They should do their best, but if there is incidentally damage here and there...
And, and I know, I know it's tight, and, and if they're blowing snow in a snowstorm and stuff, it can be hard to see where it's going. And, you know, the properties are close together and everything, but stuff happens, you know?
There's, there's a lot of properties in the village that are pretty much built right on the street.
Oh, I know. I just uncovered, I uncovered a tar sidewalk recently.
Looks awesome, by the way.
It's been buried for, for years and years, and...
Looks awesome.
And the only trouble is, it's so narrow, it won't be able to be blown away in the, in the, in the winter. And even if they were to, there's no place to put the snow anyways.
Yeah.
So, if we do get another round of sidewalk money, maybe they could extend it on the other side of the street, right up to the telephone pole, and then have the crossing right there at the corner, and probably be better for visibility and everything, too. And this goes to what Sean said, too. Carson, when you, if you do put in the cold patch, right there on the corner, too, there's a bunch of undermining and erosion from the heavy rains we've had and stuff. And if we don't get that cavity filled, you know, sometime soon, it's just gonna get deeper and bigger. So, if you guys do have a chance to do, you know, get the cold patch to raise up the street next to the sidewalk, ten feet away up the corner, it'd be a good idea to, to patch that cavity. It's getting bigger every, every rainstorm. And I think that's about it. Oh, and I wanted to thank you again for allowing the four-wheelers in the village.
You're welcome.
They're, they're great, they all do the speed limit, they all wear helmets.
Life is brief.
It's, yeah, it's just great. Thank you so much.
All right, so moving on to water sewer. Ernest?
Aye, aye. I should move on? Who was it? Do you wanna speak?
Well, we did get the okay, right, Terry? Yes?
Yes, we did.
Okay. I believe that's all you wanted, right?
Yeah, all I wanted is okay.
Yes.
If I can be of any help, just give me a call, and I'll, and I, and I'll try to fit it in, and, uh, 'cause we don't want that to plug up, like who did, well, I said it.
And Eric Pope got with Jason Sebene and got back to me and said that they're fine with it. Remember I said that he needed his boss to okay it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And he did. He said that if, if it worked in the past, we just wanna be sure that that doesn't get backed up.
Well, it's gonna make, well, I didn't think it made that long, but it's gonna make twenty years that's been up in there now.
Really?
Oh, yeah. It's, time goes by, yeah? It's unreal.
Yeah, it does, it does.
We never had any problem, but I don't want it to jam again and water go over the street and go down the cellar. I had to replace the, the gun, 'cause it, two, two and a half feet of water down cellar, and, uh... So, you let me know whenever you can, when you're ready, and I'll give you, I'll be more than happy to give you a hand.
Sounds good. Carson, you got any update? Anything going on water sewer?
We, we have two pumps going on Dominion now. That was a, a nice, not upgrade, but we're, we're up to speed over there. As far as anything else, no, it's pretty much been this is your...
Regarding the, that, the sixty percent, twenty-year evaluation aspect, all the discrepancies that were on there, is there any way you could give us at some point an update of what, what you're taking off? Like, what you've already tackled on that? On that list?
Absolutely.
They're just, they're looking for an update from the village to see what our next steps are for all those discrepancies. And I know that you and Marcel have already been starting to tackle some of that.
Yep.
Obviously, we're still waiting for some estimates from them on what they believe like the cost will be for like the pump station, the pump house here on Dominion Ave, that kind of stuff. But if you could just give us a, go through that list, and just give us everything that you've taken care of, and maybe an update on what you feel you'll be able to grab in the next year or so?
Is there any do that?
That, that would be, that would be helpful for, for us when we go, go forward.
Absolutely.
All right, so...
I have a question about water and sewer.
What's your question, Ray?
Ernest had brought to the attention of the board that he had been being billed under an estimation for all these billing cycles, and yet, the board acted surprised, so did both the water employees. What did the board find out, and why was that being done? What employee was estimating under what was being used? Because clearly, Mr. Chauquette made it quite clear to the board that water was not being registered as being consumed properly. So, did the board investigate as to the possibility why we weren't billing out properly?
And if you would've listened to Ernest's full comments that night, he said it was working properly now, and he's getting, and the meters reading correctly.
No, I did listen to that. You didn't listen to my question. Did the board find out why?
Yes.
He was not being billed properly?
Yes.
Why?
Because of the computer. It was on the computer, they're right. And once they, once she figured it out, it's on the computer, now it works fine.
So, it was the operator of the computer that was entering it wrong, is what you're saying? We had a faulty computer not registering, everybody's neither.
And we, uh, this goes to that...
That answer doesn't make sense.
That answer doesn't make sense.
Well, I don't know, all I know is that it's working fine now, so we...
We understood that, I wanted to understand why it was being guessed at before.
And the ghost accounts, whatever happened to the ghost accounts?
Okay, so we're not, we're not gonna...
When is it time to ask questions about water and sewer, Mr. Chairman?
And, and the water and sewer is talking to the...
If I could just say one comment, just to give them, him a little kudos to, to Carson. Carson and Marcel were, is able to rebuild the pump for about two hundred dollars, or a hundred dollars instead of two thousand dollars. So give him a little kudos for saving us some money there, appreciate a little extra effort and we're able to do that.
Which pump, which pump was that, Terry?
Up by, on Dominion Ave, right? Is it Dominion Ave one that you were able to rebuild or something?
Yeah, we've been running on one pump for... Is that the one with the grinder in it? Yep, yes, and now we're all up to speed there.
Good job.
All right, so we're moving on.
Am I not gonna get an answer to the question, Chairman?
I'm finishing business. When is the talk finished with water and sewer?
When is the talk finished?
This is our meeting, this is our meeting.
This is our meeting.
This is our agenda.
Then why is the public here, mister? Why is the public here, Mr. Chairman?
To listen to our meeting.
No.
This is our meeting.
Show me in the rules that you set into a kind of where it says we don't get to ask questions. Show me the rules, Mr. Chairman. You're gonna have to call a man with a gun to remove me, I'm tired of your tiring.
Well, we're tired of you tiring and filling our, our meeting room full of all this bull crap.
I think they get to...
No, they don't.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Listen to the king, no they don't, Queen, he's in control.
Excuse me, she is speaking.
Now I was speaking.
I think there's a question of if there's a motion on the floor before we vote, but there is no motion on water sewer, right? We have no motion.
Right, that's right.
The public meeting law, forgive me, the public meeting law, the open meeting law says the public is allowed to, to comment on any business that is before the board, provided you set time limits.
And we do, and we have a time right, right at the beginning of the meeting.
Let's public comments and concerns with no questions, you made that clear, Mr. Chairman. So I asked a question, when can I ask questions to you as my voted-in representative who is supposed to answer to me as my elected official? I'm not out of order, I requested to fall under your orders and you won't respond.
She said, wait, you have a comment.
Um, sorry, um, sorry, I was late, sorry, I don't do these things. But I'm Sean Provantia's sister, I'm the one that owns the house. And I was just here to support Sean about if it won't be too big of a deal, if we could fix that right around my house.
And, and we, and we, we covered that.
Yeah, I just want, I want a shirt, that's why I said I was late. I'm like, not trying to be a stinker or cause complaints because I'm the one, I don't like to get involved in politics, but it's starting to hit our carbs and I have friends that their cars sit low and I just don't want something bad happen, so.
So Carson, I believe, is it cold patch that we decided on?
Yeah, so yeah, that, yeah.
Yep.
When's the asphalt plant closed?
Yeah.
Water and sewer?
We are going on to unfinished business.
All right, thank you.
Website quotes. April.
Um, I call Lowell and Westfield, and they just use like GoDaddy. And Westfield had some ramp from twenty years ago and their other issues were there, so. Lowell uses GoDaddy, it's like a hundred and sixty bucks, but...
Could you speak up a little, April, please?
We don't have, I don't think it's as secure as how they're willing to do it. And if we're gonna offer online payments, you're gonna be safe.
I don't think it's secure.
So I don't know, do you wanna wait till next year?
I think at this point, we're gonna have to wait probably, anyway, to put it, put it into our budget, or do we, or...
Is there any item, just because it's next time?
What was, what was the, what was the, the price again?
Uh, twenty-three ninety-five, two thousand three hundred ninety-five pounds.
This is, this is to get payments for what?
Water and sewer.
I thought we were past water and sewer, I still had a comment for water and sewer.
We are not on water and sewer, we're talking about our, our quotes. Stop interrupting our meeting.
I still had a comment for water and sewer.
So it's just... Sorry, it was two thousand...
Twenty-five dollars, that's a one-time thing, and then nearly it's four hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Well, that would be used to regular taxes.
Taxes, water sewer.
Yeah.
So this is...
I personally would like to see it done now.
Meetings, yeah.
To make people, who are gonna be paying the taxes. I'll get you something.
So this is my area of expertise, right? And...
Who's speaking?
This is Leo Joy.
Oh, I couldn't tell if everyone would have asked whose mouth was moving.
I'm sorry, you wanted to see his smiley face.
No, I, I knew it was you.
I'll have one made up with you.
I couldn't tell whose mouth was moving as far as who was speaking.
So anyway, just, so April, the, to secure side of the payments is handled by a gateway, a payment gateway, right? So authorize.net is very common, there's a lot of larger, very, everybody uses it. So authorize.net is one of the largest ones. That's the, there's no, it's not rocket science, you create, it's pretty easy to put a site together with a secure payment gateway. And GoDaddy is not the go-to kind of, might be able to develop the websites through GoDaddy, but your secure payment has to go through somebody else, so. Those are somewhat to e-commerce platforms. My advice would be to call an organization like, again, the Vermont Cities and Towns, whatever it's called, the right name, I always get it wrong, so, even though I've been told a million times probably the right name, but they will have great suggestions and who's using what for that purpose. And call them first, because there, there may be a public payment gateway that most cities and towns use in the state of Vermont, and that's why you wanna, they're the ones that create that security for, for the payments. The website, see, the website stuff is easy, anybody can knock that down.
Wanna put in a bid, Leo?
Uh, no, well...
Think I'll make sure everybody pays their bill.
No, I was thinking more like, I'm sure there's a twelve-year-old around that can do it, pretty recently.
That's what Harold Haines used to do with his real estate website.
Hire a twelve-year-old?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, exactly. Yep, I'm used to it. And the other thing too is, it's a technology that's constantly moving. It's like, what you did last year doesn't count anymore, so.
Moving targets.
So, we want to do anything on that this meeting?
We're looking to see where we can...
Oh, get it out as well, too?
Yeah.
I think it's an important thing to have because of the convenience of using it to pay taxes. And this is tax time, and people can use their credit cards online, sitting at their house, they can pay their taxes without having to, and you'll be surprised, because I had it last year. The ones that are happy that they don't have, you know, they're not struggling. And they're not having to face you with your credit card to pay their taxes because they can't afford to pay this year. You'll sit at home and not be embarrassed, they at least haven't face-to-face handed you their credit card to pay the taxes. That's what I found last year.
But the question is, whether we have it in the budget.
I, I agree, but if you look at your audit, Leo...
My suggestion is, given COVID-19, that, that working towards non-face-to-face activities like paying your taxes or water bills here is something that there's funds available for. And again, I would impress upon you to call the white people, to include Phil, Governor Phil Scott's office...
And not listen to you, continue another conversation while you're talking.
To call Patrick Leahy's office, Bernie Sanders' office, and the Vermont, the city, the league of the cities and towns in the state of Vermont, there is funds out there for this kind of stuff. There doesn't have to be a budget item.
Yeah, you might be able to get a muni grant through the state, Terry. A municipal assistance grant.
The only thing you can do is if you have nobody in house...
What, you pulled one you filled out? Right, and what I filled out was for the town, so when you did that, it was separate, it was a muni on it.
What is that, what is that for?
Um, it's for COVID relief, if you needed something for COVID, like a laptop you took home to work remotely and that type of thing. So that makes all the...
Yeah, but that's, the deadline is September fourth, that's why, so. But it's very easy to do. I'm fine with filling something up, getting money for it, I mean, that's what I would be great. It's very easy, just, you know.
Yeah, they're trying to shovel that money out of the State House before the deadline.
You have to have it set up and running, well, we go right away, you have to have it set up and running by December.
There's, there's grant writers available, right? That will help, will assist you in writing the grant, you can hire someone and pay them and the part of the grant is their fee.
This grant is very easy.
Right.
Did you already do that, or?
We did that for the town.
For the village, huh?
No, because I didn't know what could be used for a website, I didn't even think of COVID-19.
Right, yeah. No, and it doesn't specifically, it may not...
The public gets to comment during meetings. God forbid you shut off any option or option for somebody's idea. It's stupid. It's such a tyranny.
You wanna, you wanna...
No, that's not gonna work. It's crazy.
Okay, so website quotes.
I make a motion that we approve getting it, and if it can be funded by the grant, it can. If it can't, we will have some money left over under legal audit, which would not put us over budget if we get it, just so that we have it one way or the other. And some of that, that grant, maybe you have to have already purchased, do you know if that was, like, you, you didn't have to?
We have it already purchased.
But you don't have to have had.
I think you have to have it by December thirty-first or something, but I'd have to be real...
And if we can get it for that, great, but if not, we have enough left over on that line item so we're not gonna be over budget if we get it this year. I think it's more important that we get it.
So we finished paying all our repoties, and that's all, and give us two thousand seven fifty, like, you know, okay.
All in favor?
All right. Okay, so, the town be...
Is she up?
No, no, I'll finish my one and then I'll go. I don't know.
Okay. All right, so, under unfinished business, Lydia Parker's not signed in for Zoom, so we will table her till next meeting. So new business.
I had unfinished business, the board was supposed to answer from last meeting on public records you've asked.
So, new business, Bob Jacobs.
Um, I'm just here to, to make sure that you guys still want the town to plow the streets this winter.
Absolutely.
Okay, just double checking, I like to come every year with all, just to make sure. That being said, I'll have to get with Carson at some point, just take the crews around, we might have to cut a few limbs and trees, different spots to make sure the trucks can get in. Make sure there's no manhole covers or anything sticking up anywhere that we'll hit with our plow, but for the most part, I think you guys have got a lot of those.
So, I think John was down garage today, did he tell you about the manhole cover on Blair Road again?
No.
Okay, maybe he talked to Mikey, or, so that, somehow we're gonna have to try to figure that manhole out? It's the same one that Mikey hit last year with the plow?
Yep.
Coming into the telephone pole, so it's, it's, it's eroded again from the water?
So my question, now that we're talking about that road, is, has that culvert been fixed? That's got a hole in it down towards the trailer?
So I got another, I got a question for that too.
Yep.
I guess is, how far do you know how far our road goes?
According to the village map, according to the village map, from the main road, I call it the main road, it's North Pleasant Street, correct, up there?
Yep.
Um, from there, it's three hundred and seven feet is where the village line ends, which puts us right in line, about six feet past John Gaiette's driveway. That's the end, pretty much where Mr., the fellow that lives down there, signs are up.
Yep.
That say no...
Is that culvert past that?
Yes.
So that...
Which, that's why I was going to ask, if that culvert's in that bad a shape, I'd rather not have the town's dump trucks going over it. You know, because there is a hole, and I know Carson has brought it to my attention too, and, but, I don't know how you guys feel or what, how you're gonna approach that.
So, what, so what Terry was just saying is if, if the, if the board sends a letter to Derward, then see if he will fix it, because it's on, it's on him, that's his either right-of-way or driveway.
Right.
Um, and then, then I guess we can assess from there, if he fixes it, great, you guys continue like normal. If not, if we have to make, if, if we have to get a, a pull-off where you guys back into John's yard, something like that, if we stop there so you don't have to keep driving over it?
Yep.
We, we can do that.
Yeah, no, that, that works for me, like I said, my biggest concern was just making sure that you guys wanted us to plow again and then get with Carson and making sure it is good and cut back and, if that's okay with you guys.
Yeah, is this by contract, annually?
No, it's by the hour.
No, I mean, are we, do we renew this yearly with you guys, with the town?
I think, I think it's a verbal thing, that's why I come, I come here to talk to them.
So are you making a motion to accept the town to do our street villages highways and this is open for discussion? Or is this is just another tyranny thing going on?
So we don't have to make a motion for it. Yeah, so we'll keep on business, after you go for a ride with Carson, if Carson knows any other streets or anything like that, obviously, if there's some manhole covers or some shut-off boxes, that kind of stuff that need to be fixed, we'll have to get on that sooner than later.
Yep.
Then we'll, we'll take care of that.
I, I figured as much, because that's a big deal, so. That's all I got, that's all I wanted to ask.
Sure.
If you guys are open with me, I'm gonna take off.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
I think I'm gonna do this one, actually. Thank you, guys, do a good job, we're gonna talk about it later, thank you.
No. So I'm gonna ask...
He just wants to be excused for...
I gotta be excused for, for phone call.
Okay.
I'm gonna call this, so we're sure that she has an honor to hold.
Do you have a phone with you?
Yeah, she's done that, you have to make sure she's not trying to get us because this guy, I just don't want her to be trying to cling on.
Yeah, good for her.
Yeah.
Well, that's it.
I'll... I mentioned that before, we're down, yeah, I'll remind Helene.
Never condemned like a democracy, two hundred-year-old Jackson is dead because of these three people.
I don't know if we ever get down to the, down to the conference station, like...
Shame on, shame on. They can't, I know, I remember, I was a student. We're talking about many, I would want it. It clearly was all clean.
I'm gonna look at the roof. The roof, uh, for years, it's been moss and lichen on it. And it's, it's covering up the...
Shame on all three of them.
And it's, it's rotting.
He rotted up, he...
We mentioned that before, when we were down here looking, we looked at it from inside. You have to see it to believe it. It's probably the shingles that were put on the building whenever it was built.
Yep.
And it's, it's, it's fairly... And it's, it's fairly true. If it goes out, good luck.
He's not doing it. If I was people's civil rights.
Steve and Tom were just telling me that the warehouse that we've built in, down at the warehouse, he's getting all kinds of moss on it and everything. So can we just tell if we could send Carson and myself down?
You heard it. Check out it, yeah.
Yeah, we mentioned it before. Somebody should look at it.
You announce a prevention, you know?
Absolutely. To look at the law.
All right. Yeah, I'll need to tell them. If you don't do that, make them, okay. And that's the public record of history, just like I've got five other cases.
So the tax rate, she doesn't have to pay it yet.
Yes, she does. All right, so moving on to tax rate.
You made it through Laurie?
No, Chip.
Good, who did Chip?
Yes.
Oh, Chip's best guy ever. He trained me, he's awesome.
I thought the minute she said Chris, I was gonna say, oh, I can't believe.
She's still on the phone. Good.
So you did it, that's great.
All right, so what was our tax rate last year? And what is your? What was the figures that you come up with this year?
The figures for this year is point six seven seven.
Oh, nice. We like it that way. Awesome.
Pardon me, what was that?
Point six seven seven.
One point six?
No, point, zero point six seven seven.
Point six seven seven, thank you.
And that is the, does that like the minimal amount to cover all?
That's right, you add all the expenses, we buy us the anticipated revenues. And then the waiting payables. Only twenty nineteen, that's about six point seven seven percent.
Do we go to point six eight?
Twenty nineteen was point six nine.
Yep, awesome.
So we go to point six eight, do we stay at point six seven seven?
Yeah, what you do is you put it in the system and they tell you how much you gotta get it like that. So the point six seven seven is good.
Terry, is it, is there any calculation for people not paying the tax when it's put in the system?
I don't understand what you're asking me.
Well, any statistical calculation would include, should include. You know, it's not just, so that goes out to everybody. And so it's not, I'm assuming it's not a, I'm assuming that the formula doesn't assume that everybody is paying their tax.
Yeah, you, unfortunately, we have to.
Oh, you do, okay, that's what I was.
This is how much we need to pay bills.
So you don't have a choice, that's what you have to.
Yeah, no, we can't. I understand what you're saying, but yeah.
But if they don't pay, we get it eventually.
We get it the next year by tax sale, that's right.
Okay, I got you.
Yeah, but no.
Well, that's if they recorded it in the receipt book, in the water log, in the joint with taxes and do it properly.
Okay, so we need a motion for this?
I do, yeah, I need a motion to accept point six seven seven percent.
So all in favor of setting the tax rate at point six seven seven percent?
Aye.
Going up?
Aye. Door, door down?
No, the muni taxes.
No, your water rate will stay increased.
By point oh two percent. Lower than last year.
All right, so we can move on to other business. And that is, so furnace, we have furnace repairs. That, so Blanchard's came and what were they here for, to set up the propane?
No, they came because we had to have a tank inspection, we have to have one every three years.
Yep.
And then they checked the furnace, both furnaces, and Fred had the one that burned. So we can not use that until it's replaced.
And there was a couple other little things involved in that, correct?
The underground piping needs to be redone, which is the.
Yeah, so we need to find a, a new furnace.
They did not give me a call.
They're, they're supposed to come back, right? But they haven't, they haven't got that far yet. So we wanna contact them to have a quote? Do we wanna get, contact some plumbers who can, that we can buy the furnaces and have the furnaces installed? And they, they'll, they'll take the, they'll do everything else from there.
You're gonna get estimates?
Won't, 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 right?
Right.
I mean, who, who would you wanna use?
You're talking Florida or?
Yeah. So, I mean, so local, we have Rondo's and Troy.
He's fine.
Which they've, they've, they've done work here before. And we can get, and Seva Blanchard's, some we, at least we'll have those two, and we can go with those, those two.
What about getting estimates for the cheapest one?
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, Fred is another one.
So Fred's don't do any business with us?
That sounds good.
They do.
So, so we'll contact Blanchard's, have them come give us an estimate, like they're supposed, supposed to, I think. And then we'll contact Rondo's.
When you contact Rondo's, have they one that can move that Renai, I believe?
Oh, I don't know. I did get a, I did get a call on that.
Okay, good.
The guy that came for propane.
He did, okay, good.
Yeah, so they were about three fifty?
Three twenty nine.
Yeah, that's definitely worth it, because it's not gonna heat well.
No, and the tough part was like if Rondo's deal with like the Renai, they could set it all up. But then the propane, the propane companies still has to come in, because they're not certified to, to test or to light. So it sounds like.
Yeah, just let them, that's fine.
Blanchard's would probably take, take that.
Are you going to a tankless hot water here?
No, we're not doing anything with the hot water.
What's the Renai for, if I may?
Heater.
Oh, for the?
Back office.
Oh, okay, just a forced hot air unit?
Yeah.
Thank you.
They just removing it?
Adding it.
No, they're removing it.
We're moving it.
What are you gonna do, just give it to them?
We're moving it.
You're removing it, right?
No.
No, we are.
Moving into a different place.
Oh, okay.
Different location.
Because of the remodeling.
All right, so is there anything else?
Removing and moving.
For the repairs. Have we, we haven't heard anything else from any, for Robert as far as? No, he didn't get it to us.
Could his services be just built for his water in Sewerville that he owes instead of being paid out? Any chance of that?
You mean attaches?
Okay.
No, just. He's charging fourteen to take case instead of paying him.
Winter sidewalks.
Oh, that, that would be too much, sounds.
Okay, so we can just come out?
Took out Carson or left.
It's only eleven grand.
Fourteen.
Something like that.
So he. Can you guys be quiet, please? Thank you. So he wants to continue just, he wants to do all like the, the roads up and down. And then somebody else just do strictly the sidewalks. So, like, so the, the weekend. Weekend work.
It's eight grand.
Won't need, won't need so much done. Just trying to figure how that works. If we had two workers instead of one, because I guess we've never had. The tough part is trying to find, again, we're back at that, you know, trying to find that employee that will be worth and not like hurt our equipment and, you know, and show up and be able to do it like at four or five in the morning, get it done for the school and all that kind of stuff. And at the.
I have somebody you can contact that would be interested.
For whatever rate.
And has experience operating.
Can you stop interrupting, please? And for whatever rate that we set for it. And then, so then that goes into like, well, we'd have to look into our, our budget. Let's see what we have budget for. Your thoughts for that?
I was gonna ask if this person would also be like the, the weekend guy for the water department to.
Me?
Well, especially what Marcel is.
Once he's done.
Right, and then this is what we had talked about. Well, last year when, when we hired Carson and then Marcel was still here, if we were gonna, you know, because they decided to, they were gonna handle all of it. And then, so we don't know, so this year, we don't have it budgeted, I don't think, or do we? I don't think we have it budgeted for another employee, because we already have Marcel and Carson both working.
Right, as far as water sewer, I don't think we can have them on weekends, if that's what you're saying.
Right.
For this winter.
But when we hire someone, we have to also ask them if they'd be willing, because you don't want a person for sidewalks and another person just for six hours.
No, but I think Marcel's doing it and will continue at least through this winter. At least through this winter, Marcel will continue to do it, you know?
Is it on call, Terry?
It's what on call.
It's a position, I mean.
I mean, as slow as needed, yeah.
As needed. Thank you.
So that's, that's what we, we kind of face, like, are we looking for an employee? Like a, a real part-time employee that's gonna be doing weekend stuff, you know, for the, the sewer? That way we can try to weed Marcel out and then take care of our winter sidewalks and streets during the winter? Or are we just looking for like the short term, like this winter strictly just sidewalks?
I think with Carson and Marcel putting in the hours, the extra hours Marcel is to get caught up on projects and stuff with the water and sewer, in my opinion, that's all I'm saying. He's been putting in more hours, training him and stuff, and Carson is not able to go for trainings and stuff other than online. My opinion is this winter, just get a sidewalk guy. And next year with a budget, look into the reality that Marcel's not gonna be here forever and then start maybe looking at that point, if that makes sense? Just because for budgetary reasons and stuff, who can we and who can't we afford? You know, because we do have more hours in Marcel in doing the weekends and stuff. But he, he does go home, if he knows he's doing the weekends, he does go home and back off a little, you know what I mean? He's not.
Right, right, right.
He's, he's doing a good job, making things done, and that's amazing. But I know you had spoken that too, of having a person, having an extra person, having an extra body.
I mean, eventually we're gonna have to.
Absolutely.
In, in a, in a matter of like finding the right candidate, matter of getting him the order, the training.
Would it make sense to, you know, depending on who we have applied this year and who we end up getting, getting them just on that part-time basis to see their work ethic, see if they're gonna be a candidate? You know, like when Carson started out, we kind of thought, he's a candidate, he's good, he's done a good job. You kind of get a feel for the person.
Hi Sheriff.
Hi.
So the gentleman I wanted to be removed had just walked out.
Yeah, I just met him.
Okay.
He didn't talk to me, but he was getting in his car.
So I'm, I'm assuming he probably knew that I was contacting you.
Okay.
So from, from here, like, obviously some of our meetings have been getting a little outrageous.
Okay.
So we are going to probably look into maybe contracting and seeing if we can get you, like, want somebody to come just for our meetings, that way if there's any outbursts or anything like that, we can.
Do you mind calling the state real quick?
I already did.
Calling off four hundred, so he can come all the way out here.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
But if we have a copy of the open meeting law and the open meeting laws are being violated, do the citizens have a chance for a rebuttal?
So, I'm sorry, what do you, say that one more time, sir, sorry.
I'm forgiven.
No?
The, I, I'm a former trustee. And the open meeting law says that the people have a, have a chance to comment on all business before the board.
Okay, yeah.
You know, provided time limits are set, nobody wants to be here all night. I mean, you know, it's, it's a common sense type thing. And if, and if the board, if, say hypothetically, if the board is not following the open meeting law, we're, we're not violating the law there, right?
Well, that's not, yeah, that's not something we're gonna get involved with if, as far as the, how the board is operating, things like that. If you don't feel like they're operating properly, then that's not something we would get involved with. The only thing we would get involved with is if somebody was here being disorderly.
Being unruly.
Yeah.
So with the open meeting law, again, this is, with the open meeting law, this is our meeting. Everybody has their voice for the, during the, the public comments and communications. If they, if people continuously to interrupt the board and then having their own conversations, we can ask them to leave. If they don't wanna leave, then we can have them escorted to leave.
Obviously, Rich, and, and.
And that's, and that's what we're trying to get a handle on with this board, because this tonight's meeting was out of hand. There's, there's comments, questions out there, there's name calling, there's getting personal stuff, there's no reason for it.
Yeah.
So that's why we had to call the sheriff department to come.
And, and I, I've never raised my voice, I've always been polite.
We're not saying you, Steve.
Yeah, but we have disagreements and we've had some before. But, you know, if I've got a copy of the open meeting law, I think it would be nice if both parties observed the open meeting law. That's all I'm asking.
I understand. So I did get all the state.
Okay, thank you, sorry about that.
So like I was saying, like, we may be in contact, you know, to see if we can contract. Obviously, we've had the same, I've had the same conversation with, with Terry, who sits as the Troy clerk with this select board over there. And unfortunately, we're coming to the point where we may have to use town hours to just help gain control over our, our, our meetings. So.
Well, how often, you don't have meetings every.
Usually once a month.
Yeah.
So prior to today, like, I've had this conversation with previous administration there, and it never went anywhere. So this is the best show up that we've had, which, which is great and appreciated. But that's where we're, where we're at. You know, we don't want, and the tough part is our meetings go an hour, two hours, you know, and if, and if you guys are busy and we make this phone call, takes me five minutes to get ahold through Derby. Now, that's why I had asked you, like, how far out you were, because it's kind of a waste of a trip.
And I can, and I can also try and attend there, because it does go towards the town hours if I'm here.
Okay.
So I'm not saying I'm always gonna be available for that, but I can try and make that compromise and stuff so that we're not taking away from you out there and stuff, so.
Okay, that sounds good. So I guess we'll just be in more communication down the road over the next month or so, and we'll, we'll let you know.
You want me to hang out, he's still out there, or do you want me to?
I'm sure he's, did he ride with you, Steve?
Yeah, yeah, he, he's, he's, forgive me, he's deaf in one ear.
Okay.
And he doesn't, he, he has problems with voice modulation. And other than, I mean, there was a little drama here tonight, and I don't think it was kosher to be, use any expletives. It's just not, it's not classy.
Well, there was also insults, you know, like calling him King Richard and Queen Terry.
Yeah, I think, I think a lot of that has to do with the state of emergency and, and not being able to vote on the budget. And, you know, there's things like that. I, I, I think it's affected different people differently. But no.
An excuse acting appropriately while.
There's, there's no reason to raise your voice or be rude, it's not, no. And it, once the meeting's over, he's fine. It, and it, once the meeting's over, he's fine. But I, I wouldn't see any reason to stick around, he's never. I, I.
Here, so I can hang up a little bit, no problem.
Fifteen years, I've never seen a violent streak in the gentleman.
Well, when he stands here and tells me he's gonna spit in my face, but he doesn't want to get charged for assault, that's.
Yeah, that's, that's not cool.
That's, that's a little overboard.
Yeah, yeah, that's rude.
We couldn't do it with a mask on anyway, so you don't have any of your words now.
Okay, well, thank you, Jen.
Nice meeting you.
So. Oh, sorry, Sheriff Howard. So we're talking winter, winter sidewalks, so obviously we want, we, we want, I agree with, with what Terry had just got done saying as far as, uh, looking for the, like, the short term, just get a sidewalk person. What we are gonna have to figure out is like the rate for that, uh, what, what we're gonna pay, uh, what we're looking for hours, and obviously the hours are always hit or miss depending on, on winter storms. Um, are we gonna set hours and give, you know, then if there is no, do we comp those hours, just like, you know what I mean, like, do we, if so, if he only works five hours, but he's slotted for ten, do we, and he has to work fifteen, obviously it's a wash? Or do, if we slotted for ten, do we have him work ten doing miscellaneous stuff, or even looking down at the sewer plant, that kind of stuff, like?
Why don't, why don't we, you might get someone who's late, you know, that's laid off in the summer that wants to do it for the winter? And it is, it's a few hours here and there, so.
I think, I think you should just do the plowing, because when we hired Carson, Carson did a lot of other things, but Carson still does hot mugging things, you know what I mean?
Right.
So, and so a lot of that stuff is done, like Carson cleaned up the whole garage there and.
No, I'm just, I'm just worried, because obviously if we, you know, we're hiring, we want to hire a person who is, um, competent and, you know, trustworthy with, with our village equipment. And for, I don't know the clientele you're gonna be able to grab for five to ten hours, twelve bucks an hour, you know, and that's, that's the tough part, that's what, that's what the struggle is. With me, that is, like, you know what I mean? It's not, you know, the, the guy who's laid off, you know, for the winter, who's probably making twenty, thirty dollars an hour, you know?
I think it was fifteen last year. And I think twelve, twelve is like, gonna be less than minimum wage next year, it's gonna be twelve fifty five or something, I'm not sure.
Well, I mean, obviously we can, we can post whatever we, what we think we need, um, and then, uh, we'll see what we get for our applicants.
The next meeting, you're talking beginning of October, so you'd still have, have time.
Yeah, hopefully.
We do have.
Yeah, hopefully we don't have too much snow in October, but, you know.
You know, but I mean, we, and not that I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna wait a month, but, you know what I mean, if we.
So what did it take to put it out, we just gotta put it out in paper, come up with something looking for, uh, part-time, uh, was it for GM help? Building your Troy sidewalk, still power operator?
Maybe we could put in an alcohol interlock on the ignition, too.
It's not, it's not a bad idea. If it wa, if it didn't cost so much.
I don't know if you want to put in anything about hours and wages, but that's it.
I think that'll just be discussed.
Yeah, yeah. Or deadline, add a deadline?
Yeah, add a deadline of, we would need resumes or applications by our next, by our next meeting, uh, so by September.
Do you want to leave that long, or do you want to have a special meeting in between, or do you want to do?
So it's what, September first now, so if we wait until like the, what is it, the twentieth, is that? Is that the final Monday of September?
Farmer's Almanac says we're gonna get a snowy winter.
And cold. So the twenty first is, oh, no, the twenty eighth is the last Monday. Now, if we have them, if we put it out until like a deadline on the twenty first, we could have a meeting at some point in that, that week. Now, take care of our trustee meeting and, I think it was two and a half, three quarters weeks, three weeks almost. Does that seem like enough time?
Yeah, one, two, three, yeah, exactly. Yep.
Okay, so put the deadline for the twenty first?
Yeah.
Even if we don't have a meeting till the twenty ninth, we give them back in time, right? Because if you're, what do you think, a Tuesday, so the, the twenty second or the twenty ninth?
Yeah, we'll look at that in a second.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, okay, we're in agreement with that.
Yep. So what, must it find a deadline, the twenty first?
Yes, and I just wanted to put up, it's unfortunate that all our, um, towns residents have left, that the, uh, we're gonna publicize it, but I want, we're gonna try and get as many people as possible. The fire department is gonna be putting on a spaghetti dinner for the town of Troy residents, free of charge, um, for the whole COVID relief thing. Um, we're gonna hold it up to the American Legion and, uh, go by the state's
Guidelines?
Guidelines as far as serving, we're gonna have, uh, it's tentative right now, we have another meeting, but we're looking on the, for the twenty sixth of September, is a Saturday. And, uh, it's gonna be free of charge and all Troy community members are urged to come, and we're gonna serve until we're out.
I can, uh, when you get a firm date on that, Rich, I have April email me and I'll put it on the Chiron on the TV station.
Okay, yeah, so, uh, we're, we're working on a, a memo today, we're gonna do like the WCAX ninety-two move, uh, we can send it over, over to you, and then we're gonna post it on the stores in Troy, Bootons, post office and clerks, I think, here, so.
Cool.
But I wanted to get that out. All right, so now moving on, now we're on to agenda items, date of the next meeting. So actually.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Can, um, a property owner have a meeting and can it be an executive session meeting? Cannot have that.
No.
Executive session can only be for certain.
There's certain guidelines, you cannot.
Uh, yeah, employees and contracts.
Yeah, so if he wanted, if he wants to get on the agenda to discuss his water sewer bill, then he can, he can do that again. But no, we can't have an executive meeting over that.
Unless he wants to sign a contract, of course.
Is there something else that you wanted to verify?
Yes. Labor Day is not one of my paywall days. I.
Why not?
I don't know.
I think that's an error.
Well, it's on the library's, but not mine.
I think it's an oversight. It's gotta be an oversight.
You've got to labor harder.
So. So, so take it off and take it paid. All right, so the.
So we're looking for another September meeting?
Uh, September meeting, yes, so I'm good for the twenty ninth, I have that day off.
Okay, five p.m.?
Sure.
So if he wants to be on the agenda, just put him on?
Yeah.
Just get him a study.
Yep.
Probably doesn't want to sign a contract.
All right. So financial, financial reports, Janis Paul will be outside.
And what's the, what's the date of the next meeting, Rich?
Thank you.
Twenty ninth.
The twenty ninth.
Have a good night.
You, you too, take care.
Um, the twenty ninth at five p.m.
Thank you.